This meeting is called to order. Would everyone please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember DePanvelis.
Here.
Councilmember Dill.
Here.
Councilmember Garrity.
Here.
Councilmember Haberborn.
Present.
Councilmember McGuigan.
Here.
Councilmember Owen.
Here.
Council President Johnston.
Here.
Also present is Mayor Taup, Administrator Frost, City Clerk Keith, City Solicitor Smith, and our City Engineer Snyder. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda for this meeting is posted in City Hall and on the city's website, summers.gov.org. Welcome, everyone. We're going to move two resolutions to the top of the agenda in the interest of everyone's time, number 278 and 279. Could I have a motion to open for public comment on resolutions number 278 and 279 only, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on resolutions number 278 and 279.
I just wanted, John Helbig, 106 East Stars, I just on resolution 278 for Dan Myers, I just want to, you know, as I'm sure all you do, want to thank Dan for all the work, all the volunteer work, all the great work that he's done with the Arts Commission. And I know on the Environmental Commission, he's been a real asset to us, so just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close?
Motion to close the public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll do resolution number 279, please.
Resolution number 279 of 2024 honoring the life and times of Summers Point K-9 Police Officer Erko. Whereas the Summers Point Police Department and the City Council of the City of Summers Point were saddened to learn of the passing of retired K-9 Police Officer Erko on October 6th of 2024. And whereas retired K-9 Police Officer Erko was accepted into the Summers Point Police Department in March of 2013. And whereas during his long career, Erko, acting with his partner, K-9 Officer Rick Dill, was responsible for countless warrant arrests and tracking activities, aiding in locating criminals and recovering stolen property to be entered into evidence. And whereas Erko truly fulfilled his obligation to detect and protect. And whereas K-9 Erko played a major role in our community awareness program and had been an ambassador for the City of Summers Point, loved and admired by many. And whereas upon retirement from the Police Department in January of 2020, Erko lived with K-9 Officer Dill, with whom he had forged a relationship of love, loyalty, and respect. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the City Council of the City of Summers Point recognize and salute Officer Erko's service to the Summers Point Police Department and to the citizens of this community. And it is further resolved that we extend our sincere condolences to K-9 Officer Rick Dill, the Dill family, and all those who loved Erko. May he rest in peace.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Any comments?
Madam President?
Yes.
I just want to thank Officer Sergeant Dill for taking on that responsibility and that role as a K-9 officer, and more importantly, for providing for her both a excellent life and a home during his time here on Earth. Thank you.
I too want to thank you, Rick. You know, I can only imagine the pain you felt when Erko passed, because I'm sure, when, a lot of us had dogs and they were pets, but that was a partner. And you were with Erko for a lot of years, day and night, and I couldn't imagine what you went through by losing Erko. I'm sorry for your loss.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 279 is adopted.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Resolution number 278, please.
Resolution number 278 of 2024 thanking Dan Myers for his service to the community. Whereas Dan Myers accepted the position of Chair of the Summers Point Arts Commission in January 2022. Under his leadership, the group has moved forward with much enthusiasm, with many new initiatives which had great success. Whereas Dan was a very capable chairman and an active participant in every aspect of the commission. Whereas Dan provided a supportive environment for all the arts in Summers Point. He was present at many classes and activities. And whereas he was instrumental in securing the use of the youth center and later the senior center to host Arts Commission events. And whereas Dan acted as our resident photographer for all city events, offered yearly photography classes, and printed and framed the students' works for the annual photo exhibit. Whereas Dan filled in as facilitator of the Summers Point Poetry Society when needed. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Summers Point recognizes and honors the efforts of Dan Myers. And be it further resolved that the City Council of Summers Point convey their gratitude to Dan Myers for his tireless volunteerism and service to Summers Point and the citizens of this community. And in addition, be it further resolved that the City Council of Summers Point sincerely thank Dan Myers and wish him well in all his future endeavors.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Any comments?
Madam President?
Yes.
I just want to thank Dan for his leadership. The programs that he put on are always of the highest quality, and I think it brought a lot of people into a different zone. They learned and experimented and a lot about the arts, so thanks, Dan.
Madam President?
Yes.
I've known Dan, I'd like to say at least 10 years or more. I mean, Dan's a real staple in our community, and he's really good at what he does, being part of the Arts Commission. He'll be sadly missed. I also know that you're also very involved with, you know, keeping things green here around town environmentally and everything, and just wish you all the best.
Madam President?
Yes.
I met Dan when I was the liaison from council, and I was very impressed with the way he pulled that group together. And it isn't often that you get to sit on a committee here with the city that's all about having a good time, doing something positive, and moving the city forward. And I totally enjoyed my time working with Dan, became pretty good friends with him, and we're going to miss you.
Madam President?
Yes.
I've had a lot of interactions with you over the years, even way back before you were involved, and every one of them has been a positive experience for me. And, you know, I hold our volunteers like yourself in high regard here in the city, and you're an asset that we're going to miss.
May I?
Certainly.
Where you at, Dan? I can't see you. Tim, move your head. There you go.
Tim, lay down.
All right, so, all right, Dan, I want, this is for sure now, right? It's 15 degrees in North Andover, Massachusetts right now. You're sure that you really want to leave?
Um, 99%.
99%.
Still got a shot.
Now, listen, you're hard to come by, you know, someone who wants to volunteer, who wants to help, between being on the Environmental Commission, you know, the Poetry Society, with the photography, you've brought so much of the arts and the environment to Summers Point, and you took on leadership roles in all of them. You are going to be missed. If the temperature does get too cold, you want to come back, you are always welcome here. Thank you, Dan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 278 is adopted.
Who do you want to give that?
Arts Commission to do it?
Kirk.
Not only Arts Commission.
Oh.
Like it. Although I'd be more photogenic then.
Right, yeah.
I'm just kidding.
All right, give me the thing.
We really don't want you to go, so we don't want to finish this process.
Listen, kids, stay out of the sun. That's all I can tell you.
Thank you, Dan. Best of luck to you. Okay. Communications. We have our, a report from the Recreation Commission, and a year report from the Director Doug Schalcross.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a report on some of the events we had going on this past year and what we're looking forward to for next year, and then some of the projects we completed and are hoping to complete in 2025. As far as the events, I can start with the beach concerts this year is, they were packed every Friday night. It seems that we're running out of space to put people on the beach there. So that was a very successful season for them. It seems like it's growing ever since we kind of came back from 2020 of not having it. It just keeps getting bigger and bigger every year. Then our, we actually had our kids' events on Mondays, and those are starting to really fill out. For next year, we're looking to kind of add a couple of dates, because we kind of run into the weather, so we're trying to add a little bit more. I think last year we only had four events, so we're trying to probably try to double that potentially for next year. Our citywide yard sale continues to grow. I think we had 75 houses this past fall, and we had 95 in the spring. So those numbers compared to when I first start, when I first brought it back in '21, I think we had like 45 houses both times, so those continue to go up as we get more exposure for that. I could speak on some of the other events, like our trunk-or-treat that the Police Department ran had over 500 kids attended. We, for my truck at least, we ran out of candy by almost halfway through, so it was very well attended. Our parade just the other, just last week had over 50 groups in it. Very well attended here at the, at the tree lighting. Our, at our senior center, where actually the yoga classes are being run, we kind of, we started off with just one week, one day a week, and it's now expanded to, it's, we're offering three classes a week right now, and it's pretty much full, 20 people in each class, correct?
Yeah.
So those have been filling up. We had a band play at the senior center in September. I'm hoping to prep, that was attended, well-attended, so we're hoping to bring those back a little bit. And then as far as some of our projects, we're actually in the process of, already in the planning of it, is, is to replace the playground down at the beach. To get that all taken out and replaced with a new, new set of equipment, and my hope is that we can kind of focus on JFK Park next. It's kind of at a point where, they give it like 20 years, but we need it has to get replaced, so then being on the water doesn't help either. And then as far as the other events, obviously hockey's working to replace theirs, and we're working to get new AEDs down at each facility. So just, you know, just in case something comes up, we want to make sure at each sports field, we have an AED available. We just got the new fence put in for the one Little League field, and we're looking to work with football to add more storage and upgrade their press box a little bit. So if there's any questions, but that's all I have.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Schalcross? No. Thank you very much for the update. Appreciate it. Anyone else have any communications to offer? Hearing none. Mr. Mayor?
Just something real quick. This past Saturday, as everyone in town knows, we had our Christmas parade, and I just want to take this opportunity to thank, actually, a lot of the city workers that helped put this on. You know, of course, Chief Summers and the Police, Chief Sweeney, Chief, the Fire Department for Company Number One and Two, Phil Gaffney in our Emergency Management, our Summers Point Historical Society, our Sewer Department, of course Guy Martin and all Public Works, and our Parade Director, Phil Krula, who really takes a lot of the burden off of all of us trying to get, you know, all the people to show up and be in a parade. He does a great job. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank all of them. This parade was a great success. I think it was bigger this year than we ever had before, and it was fast, and putting it on a Saturday, there was probably twice as many people that were available to see it as opposed to a Friday night. So I just want to thank everyone that was involved, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Frost?
Um, nothing with you.
Mr. Snyder?
Uh, yes, the city received a New Jersey DOT Safe Roots to Transit grant for $480,000 for Broadway to construct a multi-use path for the recreation facilities.
That's great, yeah. Mr. Smith?
Nothing today.
No, you're not on my list, but I didn't forget you.
That's okay.
That's not what I said. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting on November, oh, I'm sorry, let's do committee reports first. Anyone have any committee reports to offer? Hearing none. Okay, we'll move on to, could I have a motion to approve the minutes from November 24th, and executive session minutes from November 20?
21st.
First?
Both are 21st.
Okay. And as to content only, and a special meeting minutes on December 6th.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Ordinance number 20?
Ordinance number 20 of 2024, an ordinance adopting a redevelopment plan within Block 1007 Lots 1, 2, and 3, Block 1008 Lot 3, and Block 1211 Lot 2 portion, in an area in need of rehabilitation within the City of Summers Point, County of Atlantic, State of New Jersey.
Could I have a motion to open for public comment on ordinance number 20, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on ordinance number 20.
Yes, John Helbig, 106 East Stars Avenue. I just had a couple of questions or perhaps clarifications. I know you have a busy agenda tonight, so I'll try to be as quick as I can. Is there a commercial component to this project? I saw on the redevelopment plan, there were several references to future commercial development. Just wasn't sure.
No, there's no, not what they're proposing, no.
All right. Will this be a completely private project? The city will have no maintenance of the streets, the drainage system, no trash pickup, sanitary sewer. It's all going to be handled by a homeowners association?
Right.
Okay. I just looked at the layout of the lots. You know, the lots are 28 feet wide, single-family home lots. You know, the lots are probably about 2,000 square feet in terms of the buildable area of the lots. I, four-foot setbacks, so the homes are eight feet apart. I just was wondering whether our fire department's taking a look at that in terms of access, able to get the apparatus in there?
Our planner is?
That'd be great.
Yeah, because he can answer better than anybody.
Yeah, so far the project is in concept, so that will all be determined during site plan. All those reviews, including fire department, will come later.
All right, and I assume the tax implications will be determined later on as well, whether we're doing exemptions, reductions, abatements?
Again, we're in the planning process, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to close?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment.
Probably should take a roll call vote on this, and it would be connected with it. Everyone received in a copy of the Department of Planning and zoning memorandum, considering the planning board's review.
Should I read this? Should I read?
You don't have to read it.
Okay.
Just refer, everyone has it, but you're supposed to comment on it, because I'm going to summarize it quickly.
Okay. I didn't say.
So you just have to indicate whether or not you are in agreement, or you reject the, the planning board's determination that the redevelopment plan is consistent with the city's master plan, and there were no recommendations made. By the way, that was a seven, pay for zero against the planning board's review of this plan. So I just think that you need to make a comment on it, and it's really procedure over substance, but that's what we're supposed to do, so go to the procedure if you don't mind.
Madam President, a point of order, if I may?
Yes.
We have a resolution for an executive session. Discussing this matter?
No.
Not for this?
To discuss the redevelopment agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance number 20. Could I have a motion for ordinance number 20, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I thought we already did.
Maybe we did. I got this.
I think all we need is to do a roll call vote like this.
Yeah, could I have a roll call vote, please, for ordinance number 20?
Councilmember DePanvelis.
Yes.
Councilmember Garrity.
Please comment on the, on the letter from the planning board.
Just comment on whether you accept or reject it.
I accept it. I'm not going to go against the planning board.
Very simple.
Okay.
Not so, but go ahead.
Councilmember Garrity.
Uh, yes, I accept the memorandum from the planning board.
Councilmember Haberborn.
Yes, I accept the memorandum from the planning board.
Councilmember Owen.
Yes, I accept the memorandum from the planning board.
Councilmember Dill.
Yes, I accept the planning board's recommendations.
Councilmember McGuigan.
Yes, I had an opportunity to review the memorandum. I accept it. I look forward to the project.
Council President Johnston.
Yes, and I also accept the planning board's determination. Ordinance number 20 is adopted. Number 21, please.
Did you just vote on accepting the planning board?
Well, they're taking a favor of and do you accept or reject?
Okay, so it's both, aren't you? Very good.
Thank you. Okay. Number 21, please.
Ordinance number 21 of 2024, an ordinance amending sections 174-1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 10, and 11 of Chapter 174 Merkentile licenses.
This is our second reading. Can I have a motion to open for public comment, please?
I'll make a motion to open for public comment on this ordinance.
Second half.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on ordinance number 21. Hearing none, could I have a motion to close?
Motion to close that portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment on ordinance number 21. Could I have a motion for ordinance number 21, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 21 is adopted. Number 22, please.
Ordinance number 22 of 2024, an ordinance amending sections 95-1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 of Chapter 95, registration of businesses.
May I have a motion to open for public comment?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on ordinance number 22.
Motion to close the public portion on ordinance 22.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment on ordinance number 22. Could I have a motion for ordinance 22, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? I'm, I'm just going to make a comment about the, this process is going to, this is going to make the process of getting business registrations and Merkentile licenses much less confusing than it has been in the past. So this was a lot of work for Mr. Smith, and it's, but it's going to be worth it for the clerk's office as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance number 22 is adopted. Number 23?
Ordinance number 23 of 2024, an ordinance repealing Chapter 94 entitled Business and Rental Insurance Registration of the City Code.
I have a motion to open for public comment, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on ordinance number 23. Motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. May I have a motion for ordinance number 23, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance number 23 is adopted. Ordinance number 24?
Ordinance number 24 of 2024, an ordinance amending Chapter 169, Article 5, registration and inspection of certain rental units, apartment units, and dwelling units, Section 169-47 to require liability insurance for rental unit owners.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'm sorry, it's a motion to open.
Yeah, open the second, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on ordinance number 24.
Motion to close the public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. May I have a motion for ordinance number 24, please?
Make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance number 24 is adopted. Number 25?
Ordinance number 25 of 2024, an ordinance amending Chapter 169, Article 3, regulations for hotels and motels to include Section 169-32 liability insurance.
May I have a motion? May I have a motion, please, to open for public comment?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on ordinance number 25. I have a motion to close?
Motion to close public portion on 25.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 25?
So moved. Second.
Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance number 25 is adopted. Ordinance number 26.
Ordinance number 26 of 2024, an ordinance amending chapter 169, article 3, regulations for hotels and motels, section 169-28, registration forms filing contents, and section 169-39, fees.
Motion to open for public comment on ordinance number 26.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on ordinance number 26. Motion to close?
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt ordinance number 26.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance number 26 is adopted. Thanks. Moving on to resolutions. Could I have a motion to open for public comment on resolutions only, please?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on resolutions only.
I just want to say a few things.
Sure.
About the first one. Just a quick review of what is planned for 2025. Is this a good time for me to speak up about it? We have quite an activity list for next year. Shannon, can you come up?
Yeah.
Just state your name for the record, please.
Dan Myers, 429 Shore Road, Summers Point.
Shannon Kestrel, 411 Sunny Avenue, Summers Point.
Shannon has been instrumental in helping during the transition from me stepping down. We don't, as of now, have a chair, but hopefully in the future, near future, we'll have somebody that wants to be in the chair.
Uh-oh, sounds like you've been volunteered.
Hurry up, someone make a motion.
But I'm pretty optimistic. I think that'll happen. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
We also have the list with the attached resolution.
Very good. Just the highlights, we have some great new people coming in to teach some great art classes. The budget looks good. Shannon worked super hard, as well as Donna, on a grant, so we did receive a grant. How much?
We haven't gotten the award yet.
We haven't gotten it yet, but it's looking good. We did, we asked for $10,000, which is more than we've ever asked for, so that's pretty optimistic about that. We have a pretty full agenda for next year. Almost every month, there's something going on, a lot of classes, and did you want to jump in? I don't know if there's... They have the reports, so...
Sure, I'll let you off. We have a few really cool classes that we have on the schedule with some people, award-winning artists and instructors, things like color theory, floral painting, intermediate watercolors. Ms. Donahmore will be teaching a calligraphy class. We're also hoping to come to some of our city events and become more of a presence at Bay Fest, National Night Out, some of the other, what's the other? Good Old Days, by maybe doing a table with some like live painting demos, getting more involved in like community participation art, art in the park, of course, every September, and that's it in a nutshell.
Any questions?
This coming Sunday's Creative Writing, correct?
Creative Writing Group, third Sunday.
Ten AM?
Yeah, that's right.
The senior recreation building, Amber Road.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment on resolutions. Resolution number 275, please.
Resolution number 275 of 2024, resolution approving programs of activities to be undertaken by the Summers Point Arts Commission during calendar year 2025.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? I want to commend this group for everything that they do. It's for someone like me who's not artistic at all, but I do enjoy coming and seeing the things that you do, and I know how much work it takes to put all this together, so I congratulate you on everything that you do. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 275 is adopted. Number 276?
Resolution number 276 of 2024, affirming the existence and continuation of the public right-of-way adjoining block 1914 and Summers Point Maze Landing Road.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 276 is adopted. Number 277?
Resolution number 277 of 2024, resolution supporting amendment of the Fair Share Housing Act as proposed by the New Jersey Institute of Local Government Attorneys.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 277 is adopted. Resolution number 280?
Resolution number 280 of 2024, authorizing executive session, advice of counsel and attorney-client communication regarding potential litigation in connection with the tax abatement application of LBH LLC 101 East Maryland Avenue, block 910, lot 1 in Summers Point, New Jersey.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any... All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll be going into executive session at the end of the agenda. Resolution number 284. I'm sorry, 281.
Resolution number 281 of 2024, a resolution approving a short-term tax exemption application for 23 Village Drive South.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Could I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a second, please? Okay. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 281 is adopted. Number 282?
Resolution number 282 of 2024, a resolution approving a short-term tax exemption application for 4 Woodlawn Avenue.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 282 is adopted. Number 283?
Resolution number 283 of 2024, approval of short-term tax exemption application for Sunset Avenue Redevelopment LLC.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 283 is adopted. Number 284?
So moved.
Resolution number 284, 2024, authorizing executive session, advice of counsel and attorney-client communication regarding contractual billings for legal services.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 284 is adopted. Number 285?
Resolution number 285 of 2024, resolution releasing the off-site performance guarantee for Sunset Ave Developers LLC.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 285 is adopted. Number 286?
Resolution number 286 of 2024, resolution authorizing contracts with certain approved state contract vendors for contracting units pursuant to NJSA 40A:11-12A.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 286 is adopted. Number 287?
Resolution number 287 of 2024, LEAP Implementation Grant.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 287 is adopted. Number 288?
Resolution number 288 of 2024, authorizing purchase of fleet parts supply through the Sourcewell National Cooperative Purchasing Program for contract number 032521-GPC, fleet parts supply and related products for the Summers Point Public Works Department.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 288 is adopted. Number 289?
Resolution number 289 of 2024, authorizing executive session, a resolution to adjourn to executive session to discuss matter involving potential contract negotiations related to the PBA collective bargaining agreement.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I wish to recuse myself from this, as I have a... My son is a proud member of the PBA, and I will also recuse myself from the executive session discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Resolution number 289 is adopted. Number 290?
Resolution number 290 of 2024, authorizing executive session, advice of counsel regarding the status of a potential redevelopment agreement between the city of Summers Point and Route 152 Partners, Three Bozos LLC, and Summers Point Paddle Club LLC, as redevelopers of block 1,007, lots 1, 2, and 3, block 1,008, lot 3, and block 1211, lot 2, collectively the Maryland Avenue, Bay Avenue, and Pleasant Avenue project.
Is this one here twice?
This is the executive session.
Are they missing?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. This is the executive session, okay. The actual resolution, okay.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 290 is adopted. Number 291?
Resolution number 291 of 2024, a resolution authorizing the business administrator to enter into an agreement with David Nyers SCGREA for the appraisal of certain property in the city of Summers Point.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Any comments?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Within the body of this resolution, it says, there's been discussions between representatives of the city of Summers Point and Exler Building Solutions LLC with regards to this property. If Exler is interested in the property, why wouldn't they pay for the appraisal? Why would the burden of that appraisal be put upon the citizens of Summers Point?
The thought process was to... Be prepared for any interest in this property, so that we know what the value is.
Well, no, it says there's a specific interest in it. In this body of resolution says there's a specific interest from Exler, who apparently is a contract buyer of 90 Broadway, which would be the only property, or the only entity interested in the property. So again, why would the citizens of Summers Point bear the cost of an appraisal to benefit a developer?
Benefits the city, but...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
It benefits the city if we know what we can sell it for, and we can certainly... Mr. Smith?
Certainly, more benefit the developer when they...
He's going to go out to bid anyway.
So let's just put out the bid, then. Do we need appraisal?
When you're referring to a bid, Mr. Smith, what exactly is that? The bid for the services?
To bid if they want to purchase...
Sell the property.
If they want to purchase the property.
Got you.
No matter who we sell it to, it has to go out to bid.
I guess I struggle with the fact of, you know, assuming we're going to sell it.
Well, we might not, and we need to know what it's worth. I mean, that's...
Doesn't this strip of property have a history already?
This is the reverter.
It was the reverter piece, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the remainder of the vacated, uh, uh, after the drive, it's a rush, but, uh, buyer owner, Mr. Kazmar, 25 feet, the city put together 25 feet, part parcel to use green and green furniture price, and the property can only be used, 25 feet, we're selling, it can only be used as a buffer, and then it's reverter clause, and that reverter clause was extended at least two times, and the third clause was not enabled.
Was there assessments on the value of that property prior years?
When you first sold it to Kazmar.
Well, it's... It's two different questions. They sold it for, I think, approximately $340,000. The, there's no assessment on that singularly, then part parcel together. It's actually all because there's a separate logic, it's technically one, uh, one economic because you have that portion, which is really, like, being used for, it's the, uh, area where all the shrubs are, and all the, uh, commodities are, and then you have the four units, three buildings, and then one building, uh, brought by itself, so it's a part parcel. You set a bid and the tax appeal on this, you set a limit, it's a whole.
Right. I have, I just have some concerns with the fact that, let's say the assessment comes in at some minimal amount of money. There's a, there's a situation where how valuable is it to the redeveloper versus how valuable is the city maintaining it? And I think if we pay for the assessment of the property, we're, are we obligated to that amount of money, or can we still negotiate with the developer as associated with his value of that piece of property?
Well, it was a bid, it did on extra amount of dollars.
As a whole?
A 25-foot strip, the whole way out to the bulkhead.
Okay. I'm just, I'm confused, that's all.
Well, the thought...
And I don't get confused very often, but I'm definitely confused about why we're advancing on this when we don't, first of all, we don't even know whether we're going to keep it or not, and number two is...
whether we're gonna keep it or not, and number two is, you know, representing the taxpayers, I want to get as much money for that piece of property as I possibly can, okay? And therefore, I just think, I just think we should just let it go for now until we reach a point where the interested party has solved this issue and comes in to the city for, with a redevelopment plan.
Why don't you make a motion to pull the resolution?
Putting the cart before the horse, I think, when we're doing this, based on that.
I agree with Mr. Dill on that point.
Howard, why don't you make a motion to pull the resolution? I don't think I can.
Table.
Table it.
I'll make that motion to table it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Table number 291. Anyone have any old business to discuss?
I have one thing. Jason? Mr. McCary's pay. Did we ever get a response?
I did not.
All right, because it's the end of the year, and that's gonna show up in the audit next year, that we overextended that. Yeah, what's the plan? Could you notify him, and maybe Mr. Smith could follow it up with a phone call? Oh, so that's one less deficiency in our audit. Well, that may be the next thing. Yeah, so.
Mayor's always available.
Road trip.
Yeah. I'd like to give him an opportunity to rectify this problem.
Be certified, certified letter.
Yeah, Mike said certified letter.
He gets it. Oh, hey.
There's too much sunshine.
He just gets fixed up.
He's gotta stay out of the sun.
And any other?
I'm not available.
Go north. Any other old business to discuss?
Madam President, may I ask a question? 292, is this the one we're going to?
We're gonna, I'm sorry, I should have said that we're gonna wait till after executive session to take action on that.
Thank you.
New business, we need to set the date for our 2025 reorganization meeting, and I understand the ordinance reads that we have to have it within the first seven days of the year, and the first Friday of January is January 3rd.
I make that motion.
I'll second that motion, if we're gonna do it on January 3rd.
Yeah.
I'll be in Florida.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, the reorg, meeting will be on January 3rd at 7:00 PM.
All right.
Any other new business to discuss? Nearing none, discussion of the bills, Mr. Frost.
Thanks, ma'am. You still got me beat, though.
May I have a motion to open for public comment, please?
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please state your name for the record.
Captain Joe Fergal, 7 Village Drive, Summers Point, New Jersey. I'm here first, Madam Chairman, to thank you for your service as a council member, and also all the governing members of the council as well. But lest I forget, I want to make special thanks to the people that take care and protect us on a daily basis. As a 50-year resident at Summers Point, I've seen a lot of things happen, a lot of things come and go. What I'm most impressed with is the fact that our officials here, both police and fire, have kept us safe. In the case of our volunteer fire department, I give special thanks. I'm scared to death of fire. I'll take you in the ocean to the largest waves, but a fire, I'm a coward, I'll run and hide. As our police are concerned, one of the reasons we don't have a lot of problems here, although you don't hear about all of them, neither do I, thank God, is their out patrolling on a regular basis. In particular, I would like to thank our chief, Captain John Conover, and all the rest of our people who are here tonight. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close the public portion.
All right.
Okay.
One more, sorry.
Talking about Christine Kamenka, 252 Atlantic Avenue. Shaun, I don't know if you ever got those emails?
I did get that from you, and then I spoke to our code enforcement officer, and apparently there's been quite a number of correspondences back and forth on that matter. And it was suggested and advised that I do not insert myself upon that.
This is the problem with the shed being used as a piece of fence, which is rotted. And standing, it's a code enforcement issue, we don't really. Well, they refused to acknowledge that there was never any variance submitted to do that. There was a permit put in just to put a fence up. They're just totally kind of being in denial. I've owned the home before that, so I know what was there. I've owned it since 84.
Since when?
84. And if you look at what the permit says and what.
I've looked at it all.
So nobody's not gonna do anything, is what you're telling me? So I have to make it a legal matter against code enforcement, I guess, and the owners. Well, that's probably what I'll do, because it clearly shows where the chain link fence is, and that was, the permit was to replace the chain link fence with a stockade. The shed was not there at the time. The shed is even showing in front of the fence line, and they're used it as a piece of fence. So it imposes an aesthetic, and when I tried to sell my home, I got a lot of comments about you'll have to take care of that before we make an offer, or if we make an offer. So, does everybody really want to get involved with that kind of issue of causing problems for my property and selling it? Because like this rotted piece of shed is there? If it was a normal piece of fence, it could have been replaced. And this particular owner now, if I hadn't put in a formal complaint, her whole fence was collapsing onto my property a few feet, I had to finally put in a formal. I asked her nicely, this was going on for a few years. I got tired of just trying to be nice. So that's where it's at. So I guess you're forcing me to declare and go to a lawyer and file a lawsuit. Is that what you're telling me? So nobody up here will do anything about it? I just want to know what kind of counsel we have in town.
They're the kind of counsel that relies upon their professionals and their professionals.
Well, their professionals are blind, maybe for personal reasons. Okay. Maybe for personal reasons, but that's okay. The lawyer will get to the bottom of it.
Yes, thank you.
Motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. Could I have a motion to pay the bills, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Frost can pay the bills. Any further comments from the governing body? Since this is our last meeting of the year, I don't know if everybody's gonna stay until after executive, but I just want to wish everyone happy holidays and a prosperous and healthy Happy New Year. We're gonna take a five-minute recess and go into executive session. You're more than welcome to wait in the lobby, we will come out and get you when we're done. We most likely will be taking action after executive.